First on the agenda is the approval agenda. I'm going to make a motion to make two additions or one addition, which is to make appointments for the vice mayor and for the representative to the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other changes? All right. This will be under new business. Yes, ma'am, sorry. All right. With that, we'll approve the agenda. For the mayor's report, I won't make anyone suffer through a redo of my speech on Saturday, but I do have two announcements. One, we received today a letter from Judy DeSarno resigning from the Planning Commission effective the end of the month. Judy, thank you so much for your years of service to the town.
Many years.
Many years. We certainly... What's that?
We had it Saturday.
We'll see what we can do. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, we'll be looking for letters from folks who are interested in being appointed to the Planning Commission. I'd ask that the folks who are interested get their letters in by two February so we can take a look at it and make an appointment at our next regular meeting. The only other thing from the mayor's report... Oh, yeah, sorry, I'll come back to that in just a second. So, I...Gail here making sure I get it right the first time, is after consultation with the treasurer and the clerk, we're going to table the conversation about increasing tap fees for the next...while we take care of a few other things and do a little bit more research to make a good recommendation to the council. And that is it for the mayor's report. Now, I will go back to the part where we approved the minutes from December. I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from the December 12, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any amendments or changes? All right. Then they'll consider them.
Voice vote?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right. Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report, thank you. You've got everything here in front of you on the income and expenses. Just as you're going through the income for the general on page two, just a reminder that the meals and lodging report is always a month behind because all of the entities have 30 days to pay their meals and lodging tax to the town. And don't get excited when you see how little has been spent on the water because we're spending it all this month, so it will hit the next report. We just had...Brad said that the new pump went on the well today, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And we're going through and still working on replacing meters, so that expense will very quickly work its way up to the budgeted. That's it for my comments on that. Were there any questions on any of the items? Okay. I would like to make a motion that we release the third quarter funds from the budget.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Our second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, on those, you can do that by voice vote, but the clerk has to record how each member voted in case there was somebody who did not vote. But I believe that you all spoke and affirmatively said aye.
I'm comfortable with that if all my fellow members are.
That's it for me.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items to report on tonight. One is with regard to the path license with the county. We have at your last meeting, you approved the contract with Racine Engineering. We've now made contact with Racine Engineering, and they are on the job proceeding with the work necessary for that path license to be completed. And with regard to Rush River Commons, I approved the bond formats today in an email to Mr. Guyerson, and I've consulted with Mr. Guyerson regarding the Leggett Lane Road Maintenance Agreement, the third-party inspection agreement. And then after hours tonight while I was driving here, I got an email from Mr. Mitchell indicating that he had one comment from his attorney on that road maintenance agreement. So, I believe that's near final. That's how I characterize it. You know, so depending on how council wants us to address that, that's something that we can bring back to council for next meeting, or you could authorize us to finalize that agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it, subject to such minor points of detail as the attorney and zoning administrator feel are appropriate.
Any objection?
Can I just move?
Questions?
Do you have any questions?
Does that make any sense? I'm getting a look.
I just am kind of confused by what we mean by minor adjustments. What sort of issues are still outstanding?
So, one is with regard to snow removal. You have a current agreement with the owner of the post office about snow removal, so we might need to fold in some snow removal provisions here. That's fairly minor. Mr. Mitchell wanted to have an indemnification clause. That's fairly standard, and so that would say that in the event of any lawsuit against the parties to this agreement for something, only the party that was actually responsible for that injury or damage would be defending the case rather than all of four of us together. So, that's...those are the sorts of things that I think are the outstanding issues at this point. The percentages of the road maintenance agreement are already set.
Pretty minor. Shall I make a motion?
So, the motion is...
The motion is to authorize the attorney and the zoning administrator to coordinate with the mayor on finalizing the details of the Leggett Lane Agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
And authorizing the mayor to sign as opposed to returning it to council yet again.
A second. That beautifully developed motion.
That's why we love our town attorney.
And to be clear, we would not be signing up for a significant financial accommodation in this case. It's...I think when we worked through the numbers the other day, it was at the most a thousand dollars a year or something like that from the town as it took to be accumulated in the record.
I will amend the motion to include the inspection agreement.
I second the amendment.
Once again, I have a question. What are you talking about?
Could you come to the mic, Steve?
The motion would include an inspection agreement, the third-party inspection for the Rush River site being paid for primarily by the developer, and a large portion of the items or things that the county can't do or will want to delegate to a third-party inspector. So, that there's an agreement in place with...that Barton and I are working on it with the county to accommodate a third-party inspection agency.
And this is for Leggett Lane?
It'd be for Rush River and also some of the Leggett Lane construction.
Yeah, because Leggett Lane is going to be widened.
Yes.
So, it's going to require inspection to, you know, VDOT standard or whatever codes that are required, and it requires someone who is outside of the county's inspector's capabilities. So, that's what that is including, if I'm correct, Steve.
That's correct.
Steve, would it remain...I'm sorry, Jean, if you don't mind me asking a follow-on. Would that also include...it also includes a third-party inspector for the entire remainder of the Rush River development, correct?
It's pretty much...
The agreement includes, yes.
Yes, it would be pretty much everything associated with the development.
So, not just the road, but it would get us through the whole Rush River development.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, there's some town zoning and subdivision matters and sub-site plan matters that are...would not be covered by the county's third-party inspection agreement, so we have to have one of our own.
Right, okay.
Should this all be in one resolution, Leggett Lane and rest of the...
In this case, what I think Gail's motion is asking is whether or not the council would authorize the...our council and our zoning administrator and myself to go ahead and conclude that agreement, or whether we would want to bring it back to the council next month once it's completed.
But it is not just Leggett Lane like I thought. It's also just generally Rush River.
That's correct.
Just the inspection part.
It's authorizing the inspection for that, the hiring of an inspector or an inspector agreement for that. But if you're not comfortable with it, we'll just bring it back next month when they're done.
Up to you, Jean. Would you be comfortable with...because all we're authorizing is just the motion that I made about the Leggett Lane and then authorizing zoning and spec...zoning administrator, attorney, and working with the mayor to finalize just the agreement, hiring the third-party inspector that we need because of the lack of expertise from the county building inspector on something at this scale.
Okay. That I didn't understand at all, that we're just authorizing the hiring or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's finishing the negotiation for hiring somebody. Okay?
Okay.
You have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is adopted. Mr. Guyerson?
I'll stay here. Give my report quickly. It's in front of you. Don't really have a lot of activity to report on site plans, primarily with Rush River, and some straggling site plans that I hope to get in soon. But other than that, moving along fine with Planning Commission and ARB as far as any zoning matters. One thing I do want to mention is finally had a chance to begin working on some upgrading, some of the mapping, which is sorely need needed. So, hopefully, we'll...you'll see some progress over the next few months with the mapping for the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Steve. Public Works, Brad, you want to...
Yeah.
...speed on the pumps and repairs and...
Yeah, it's been kind of a busy time through the holiday season. We had a leak at patios or sort of in the road between patios and the tavern. This was something that it was on our side of the meter. So, with good fortune, we didn't have to do an awful lot of pavement disturbance.
Exploratory dig.
Yeah, yeah. And Atrium did a great job. They found what had happened. It was a pipe that had been put in many years ago, and there was a kink in it. And as happens over time, eventually those kinks let go, and that's what happened. So, we got that repaired. It was about $8,000 to do that work. There still needs to be a little bit of replacement asphalt, which I'm going to recommend, Barbara, that we wait until spring. We want to get frost out of the ground. We want to let that spot settle so that when they do put the asphalt patch in, it doesn't settle three months later. There's also some brick work, so warmer weather is prudent for that. Just before that leak was found, there was another leak in that same vicinity, which was on the other side of the meter, and it sort of popped up in the evening. Fortunately, our new database alerted Barbara to the fact that there was a meter running, significant amount of water was coming through, and we were able to identify it. The inn was able to get someone in very quickly, repair that leak, and so, once again, our new metering system is doing a good job of protecting our water resources. Today, a new well pump was installed. The existing well pump was rated originally at 100 gallons a minute. That output had fallen down to about 68 or 58 gallons a minute. It was maintaining the water flows necessary to operate the town, but we were concerned that it could fall even further. So, we've gone ahead, purchased a new pump, had that installed. We're going to take a look at the old pump and see if it's worth rebuilding so that it is available as a backup in an emergency. Because usually when these things fail, it's on a weekend, and you're not going to find somebody open to go get a new pump. So, we're going to look at and see if it warrants a rebuild, or if it isn't, then we may consider somewhere in the near future buying another pump and just keeping it in inventory for us. The work to do that, we don't have the final bills in yet, but it's roughly $20,000 for the pump and the installation. So, that'll give us a new pump, make sure that our water supply is secure. The other things that we're doing with the water system, we're looking at a different way of monitoring the amount of water in the tower. Right now, there's a float system. It's not working very well. The water tower is connected to the pump house via telephone line, which goes out of service on a regular basis. So, what I'm looking into is to do this over wireless communications, and I'm trying to find something that is compatible in terms of the network with our water meters. And if that's the case, then I'm going to explore whether or not the database could actually start reading and recording water levels in the water tower so that we have more information on our system up there. That'll be ongoing. It's going to take a while to find the right equipment to do that, and then we'll have to get prices and quotes for that. The other item I'm adding, now that we've got this new well pump in, is what's called a soft starter. The way most of these units are put in, when you call for power, it's like you flip a light switch on and the lights come on full. For big motors such as what run that well pump, that inrush does wear on the motor, and it can cause it to shorten its life. So, what I'm looking into is what's called a soft starter. I found a company that builds a unit specifically for water wells in utility applications, and we'll get some pricing on that. And again, the idea is to protect that well pump, extend its life as much as possible, and make sure that we have plenty of fresh water. So, that's where we are. We still have a few meters to go in. These are the ones that are the most difficult to install because of their location, or they need to be relocated, or in some cases, the line from the meter to the consumer is in pretty bad shape. So, we have to coordinate with the homeowners on that aspect of it because we don't want to disturb the line and break it, and then now we're into an emergency repair. So, we have a few things to do, and Atrium is very adept at handling those issues. So, hopefully, in another couple of months, we'll have the last of the meters in. And we have a spare meter now because when Rush River...
That was a surprise.
The contractor at Rush River was working. They were tearing out the trees, and they ripped up a tree to put in the brush pile, and when they did, suddenly water came gushing out of the ground. It turns out that the meter that originally went to the Black Kettle had been turned off long ago, but in the process of replacing meters, and we're not sure which company did that, they replaced the meter with the new Zenner meter and turned the water on. So, when they pulled out this tree, water came gushing out. We were able to go out there, turn it off, and when Atrium comes in, we're going to have them pull that meter and plug that line permanently because it'll not be used in any of the development of Rush River. But it was a bit of a surprise. So, you know, we did lose a lot of water, and we don't know for how long. And that's about it for Public Works for right now.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
May I add a question?
Yes, sir.
You say spring. Can you better define spring for the repairs on the street because we have a decision now?
Well, it's well compacted. It's smooth to the asphalt surface. But right now, in cold weather and putting in asphalt patch in this weather isn't advisable because it won't compact, it won't seal properly.
Would we set a deadline of March 1st?
No. No, I can't because I don't know what the weather's going to be. We could have another cold snap that goes on for several weeks. So, we'll monitor it, and Atrium could...
We can continue the conversation.
Atrium can touch it up if need be, but I think it really needs to be in warmer weather.
I also have a question.
Yes.
You gave the cost of the new pump and installation. What would it be the cost for rebuilding the old one?
I don't know. So, I have to find someone...I was going to go to Commonwealth Engineering that rebuilds our grinder pots, but this is a little different type of rebuild, so I've got to find a different company that works specifically with water pumps, and I'll get a quote. And if it isn't feasible, then I'm just going to have them scrap it, or at least we'll take a look and see.
Yeah.
Yep.
Madam Chairman, the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't actually meet in December, but in November, and I don't think we reported on that, we did have a very good planning commission with the zoning administrator walk through town with some members of some town residents, which gave an opportunity not just to go through the whole history of every house, but to look at the abandoned buildings, or the empty buildings, or the dilapidated buildings. And I think it's a good foundation for the comprehensive plan when we get to it. Just one other quick thing. I wanted to comment on the 90-day limit for approvals. We are very excited by that on the Planning Commission, and we take up that challenge with great gusto. So, thank you for that. And the third thing I want to do on behalf of the Planning Commission is to thank Judy for her great service. So, thank you, Judy.
Any questions for the Planning Commission? Okay. Drew?
Drew Mitchell, ARB chairman. The ARB last met on Monday, December 19th. There was only one application, which was submitted by the inn to renovate Cook's Cottage, which is adjacent to the large green parsonage building on Main Street. We had a refreshingly large turnout, and after a lengthy and robust conversation where everyone had an opportunity to speak, the application was ultimately approved. We didn't receive any applications for January, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 21st.
Great. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention the new ESS contract.
Sorry, one addendum to the Public Works report.
Yeah, we've received the new contract for ESS. It has gone up 5%. So, last year's cost for the...I'm going to rough the numbers here. For maintaining the water in the wastewater system was approximately 117,000. This year, it's going to be about 123,000. Cody had indicated that there's numerous expenses on their side that have gone up. In a lot of cases, it's almost in the range of 10%, but they've held our contract to a 5% increase. So, our council is just making a pass-through on the contract, but I think once he's done with it, I'm totally satisfied with it, so I suggest that we sign it so that it's ready to be implemented in February.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. And I think we want to follow up with ESS about potentially moving to a multi-year contract.
We can certainly look at that, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Rather than having to do this on an annual basis and perhaps control our costs in the long run.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Brad. All right, moving on to old business. It's time for our public hearing on solar...on the solar panel ordinance. Mr. Krim, any comments before we kick this off?
No. I think we've had a lot of good comments and developed an ordinance there that affect the public interest by making sure that we have public solar facilities in appropriate locations and have people able to use solar panels on their properties in ways that promote the town rather than detriment to it.
Great. All right, with that, I'll open it to the public. Questions, comments? Yes, Chuck.
Chuck Akry, so a citizen of the town. I just want to clarify the issue about the water. I've been paying a water bill every month since the day I owned that property, and the owner prior to me was paying it as well. No one seems to know where it was going, what it was being serviced to, but we were having a bill every month from the town, which has been paid.
Hey, let's...
Barbara, was that just the minimum for that account? Was that...
Mr. Akry was saying he's been getting...
Let's wrap up with the solar thing, and we'll come back to that as soon as we're done.
Okay.
Hearing no questions about the solar panel ordinance, I will close the public hearing. And any questions or last-minute concerns from the council?
No.
Jean?
I mean, definitions, and I guess these are probably standard definitions, but when it says rooftop solar facility, I think rooftop solar facility. It turns out it also can be wall.
Yes, if I might address that.
The standard thing is just call it rooftop even though it isn't necessarily.
Yes, I've gotten that question a couple of times from people because, you know, the problem is, it's not always clear what's a roof and a wall, and I don't really want to get into that argument. You know, it's so it's depending on the architectural style, you might have something like a mansard roof that has something that comes down and turns, and is that still part of the roof or is that part of the wall? I'm just trying to avoid those arguments. So, that's the idea there. I don't think that somebody's going to cover the front of their house with solar panels.
Oh, I don't either. It's just a little confusing to me because I see rooftop solar facility.
Right.
Roof.
Right, yeah. No, a lot of definitions are like that, though.
Any other questions from the council? All right, at that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the solar panel ordinance.
May so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 The motion is adopted, and our solar panel ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
And I think the Planning Commission deserves a round of applause for all of the work involved in getting this to us.
Next in old business was Leggett Lane Road Maintenance Agreement, but I think we've already covered that in the latest update, so I'm going to move on if everyone's okay with that. All right, under new business, a resolution to refer to the Planning Commission, a couple of amendments to the zoning ordinance, to sections 131 and 141 of the zoning ordinance, removing the residential uses from the Village Services District, and amendment to 154 of the zoning ordinance, removing the town government's exemption from the Architectural Review Board review of town projects. In this case, we're solely referring to the Planning Commission to ask them to take a look at those sections of the ordinance to see if we can, one, straighten out some zoning that would set us up to be in a good position to have a conversation with the county about potentially bringing in the other part of the Rush River project into the town in a zone that would be very similar to the county's commercial zoning, so there'd be a nice, smooth transition there. And then also on the other part is we...the town has never exercised its ability to exempt itself from the ARB, and we would like to close that loophole in the ordinance. So, I'm going to ask the Planning Commission to take those two things up and come back to us with some recommendations. I'm going to read the formal bit here in just a second, Mr. Krim, I'll refer to in just a second, but to look at those two places in the ordinance and come back to us with some recommendations on how we could smoothly make that transition in a way that would not impact any current property owners in town, or would either grandfather or make a speedy conversion of the zoning for those properties so that they wouldn't have any issues. Mr. Krim?
Thank you, sir. The resolution contains the language, additional language about temporary zoning of property brought in by annexation or otherwise. That's not in the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that everybody... No current provision in the... No current provision in the town zoning ordinance for temporary zoning of property brought in by boundary line adjustment. So we would ask the Planning Commission, through this resolution, if the council adopts it, to look at that. And there are a number of models that can be used. Some of them are very simple. Everything comes in at the same zoning district. Others are more complicated. Town Culpeper has a table that equates county zoning to town zoning, and so you can tell exactly what something's going to be when it comes in. That's all for Planning Commission discussion, but you currently don't have any such provision, and so this is a standard provision of zoning ordinances that I recommend that you adopt. That's the first step, is to ask the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Krim. I'll go ahead and make the motion, and I will read from the carefully-prepared words of our esteemed council. We will refer to the, I'll skip to the, all the wherethes to the, will therefore be it resolved that the town council refers to the town planning commission a potential amendment of the town zoning text for, one, to provide for temporary zoning of property brought into the town by annexation or otherwise; two, to remove residential uses from the Village Services District in order for the Planning Commission to hold one or more public hearings and to make recommendations for the revision of the town zoning ordinance; and three, remove any exemption from the Architectural Review Board review of the town's own property in the historic district. Can I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm questioning, you know, I'm just kind of wondering why three is being referred to the Planning Commission. It seems to me that would be a separate, totally separate issue.
Well, because it's a change to the town's ordinances, so we would let them take a look at that first before we make a decision on it and give us a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then under two...
I'm sorry. Gene, go ahead.
Well, I'm just sort of agreeing with Brad in that what's in bold and caps says it's zoning for land brought into the town, and number three has nothing to do with that.
I understand that you're saying that the Planning Commission is, you're asking them to review this. But I'm just wondering if it, you know, doing it all under one resolution, again, it seems to be sort of, again, we've got three issues here, and it almost seems like they're three separate things.
I know, but I think we could refer them all to the zoning commission in one package without breaking them apart. The Planning Commission, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. That was just our intent, was to make it a simple, single motion, since we're referring all the work to the Planning Commission on these three areas, was to identify the three areas we're referring and pass them in a single motion. I can break them into three separate motions if the council prefers, but...
Or just, could we just change the title?
Yep, we can amend the title.
The resolution refers zoning text amendments, planning commission. Idea about the architectural review has nothing to do with temporary zoning.
That's a fair point.
The one thing, Mr. Mayor, if I might, the one thing that unites these are that these are matters that the county has asked for in connection with...
Yeah. I'm less concerned about that part. I think we can amend the title. Frankly, Martin was kind enough to draw up this rather lengthy, as far as I'm concerned, the motion that I made is all that actually needs to be carried into the record, but I'm happy to amend the title, too, if we want to adopt the outline in full. Why don't we do that? All right. I will modify my motion to change the title of the resolution being referred to the Planning Commission to include, or I'll add an "and," review of the...
From there?
Portion of the ordinance requiring the town to seek approval from the architecture, or exempting the town from seeking approval of the Architectural Review Board. So we'll add that as an "and" at the end of the bolded title at the top of the resolution. Is that...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Can I?
I have a second here.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hi.
Aye.
Just jumping ahead.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. With that, the motion is adopted. All right. All right. And then, so next, we'll move to appointments, which I asked us to add earlier, and I also realized we're going to have to make one more addition to the agenda, but we'll take care of appointments first. So two appointments we require to make at the beginning of a new council, one is our new vice mayor, and another is an appointment to the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission. I would make a motion that my esteemed predecessor, our former mayor, Fred Catlin, serve as our vice mayor, but the floor is open to other nominations, should anyone choose to nominate.
You're not getting away from it, Fred.
You're stuck, Fred.
I know. Happily.
In that case, may I have a second? All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 The motion is adopted. Congratulations, Fred.
Thank you, sir.
And for our second appointment to the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, I'd entertain any nominations for someone to serve in that position. Fred has held that position for the last four years, so...
I was going to nominate Fred.
And I'm happy to continue to serve in that role.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Well, you're just a glutton for appointments.
A whole bunch of three-year-olds, so I can handle anything.
We have a motion. I'll sec, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
I made a...
Gene, did you second?
No, but I will.
Okay. All in favors, indicate by saying aye.
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 Congratulations, Fred.
Thank you, sir.
We look forward to your reports.
Forward to giving them.
And I realized at the beginning, we needed to add one more item to new business, and that was to take care of some banking-related things. Is the council okay if I make another addition to the agenda at this time?
Yes.
All right. So I'd make a motion to add consideration of a motion to create, one, to formally follow up on our business from Saturday, and a formal resolution on the creation of the Town of Washington Trust, and then also to ask our treasurer to create a savings account at the bank dedicated to a savings account that would be for our capital improvement fund. So this would allow us to sequester specific funds in the budget to do with capital improvements going forward, so things like the water, the water system, the wastewater system, some valve work, a number of other capital improvement programs. So it would create a separate category and a separate account, a savings account in which those funds could be sequestered.
Right. Because I do need the blessing from the town council, because Barbara has to send something to the bank that it's been approved.
Right.
So, as I understand it, there are two motions. One is to create the trust. The second is to create the special savings account.
Correct.
Capital improvement account.
Yes.
And you made the motion?
I'm going to, I'll make it right now. So I make a motion that we instruct the treasurer to open a capital improvement savings account, and also to formally adopt the creation of a Town of Washington Trust account. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. All right. It's time for our public forum.
Mr. Akry had...
Oh, yes. So we'll come back to Chuck's question. I will ask, Chuck, I will ask Barbara to run check that. I think it's probably because there was a meter there. I imagine in the system, we accounted for a meter, and therefore you got a minimum bill every month because there was a meter there, even though we'd all forgotten there was a meter there. But when the system crossed over, but we'll confirm that, and we'll come back to you. Apologies. Any other, anything else? All right. I'm glad you all turned out. But there being no other comments, I will close the public forum, and we will...
We're going to end the closed session?
I don't know that we have any reason to go into closed tonight, Martin. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. All right. All right. Given the matter that Vice Mayor just brought back to my attention, we will go ahead and go into closed session. I will make the, I think I have a, Barbara, do I have a copy of the? Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you all for coming out.